Hello, welcome back guys. I'm here with Steve Meisman, who's running for school board here in Pasco County in District 1. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, Steve?
Okay, so I've had some practice now. Basically, I was born in Southern California. Parents moved to Colorado, spent some time in the Midwest. And then we moved here when I was five. And I grew up in Palm Harbor. Then we moved to Pasco into Bailey's Bluff when I was going into 9th grade. And so I went to Gulf High School for high school. That's where I met my wife Amy. And we got married immediately afterward. I had a lot of fun in school. For me, fun in school was just a place to see my friends. Sometimes there was some destruction going on. I was a horrible student. Amy, on the other hand, was a professional student. And so she was doing all the honors classes and I was basically sleeping through classes. And I somehow found a way to graduate on time. And we got married right out of school. And we started our business, let's see. We went out to Denver for a bit. I went to work for an aircraft company out there, Adam Aircraft. And I was a tooling engineer and I was coding their four axis machines and doing parts, like some design stuff. Then my mother got sick and so I had to come back. So I saw them through First Flight and then we came back to Florida. And it was a very big change for us because when I was 28, we were $1.35 million in debt. That's kind of a lot for...
Yeah.
I'm not sure how anybody was stupid enough to loan us all that money, you know, between property here in Clearwater, the property out in Kansas, equipment loans. I mean, poof. But somehow I found a way to pay all that off and come back to Florida with 40 grand in our account. And no debt. Well, we had the Tahoe, so we had the 35 grand on that thing. And then we started the business and it was a real struggle, real struggle. There were some issues, you know, we ordered a machine, a big five axes. And they were late on delivery. And I had already taken orders on some parts for F-18. And that customer was, had a sense of humor. They decided they weren't gonna give me any orders for one year as a punishment. That was real tough. So we were right back into debt and struggling and having our time and, you know, doing it wrong until I did it right, you know. Kind of this, I had this Edison model of doing it wrong 10,000 times and then I finally get it right. And I think in my 40s or so, I learned the Tesla type approach, which is why don't we research what other people have done and learn from them? So then the business finally, you know, we barely eked our way by for probably 15 years. And I'm just learning, 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 learning. And then we had Wilson. I went to work for a composites company in Clearwater for a bit there and that was a, I loved that. It was a good experience. Then went back into business and we had Reagan. And so, and this is during this time, my father had cancer. So it was like 11 years he had cancer. So it was a, it's very difficult, right? Because we're, he did really well for a while, but we moved in and the last five years, we were very close. I wanted him to know my children. And I wanted them to know him, frankly. So he was a wonderful grandfather, you know. I'm thankful that I was able to give him this. And so we took care of him, along with my sister, for a while. And he passed in 13. My daughter was born in 2010 and Reagan was. And so, oh, and you were, so you were asking about the names.
Yes.
So Wilson's middle name, I'm sorry, Ronald Reagan's middle name is Wilson.
Yes.
And so Amy and I had always thought we would, if we had a girl, we'd name her Reagan. And because Amy, I posited that to her and she thought that was a wonderful idea. So that went well and then so Wilson, our first kid was a boy. Well, that was, we didn't think it had the right ring to it, you know. But I did the research and it turned out that Wilson was Ronald Reagan's middle name. We both loved it, so that really worked out well. And I think it suits him because he's a very gentle person and caring and super intelligent. And so his middle name is Nathaniel after Revolutionary War general Nathaniel Greene, which was George Washington's right-hand man. And he ran the Southern Campaign, which totally frustrated Cornwallis to the point where he made all these terrible mistakes and left Yorktown vulnerable. And thank God the French came in and we had Rochambeau and all these wonderful people helping us, right? And so that was one of the reasons I, there's the article in the National Archives called "100 Days That Shifted the World." Everyone should read that article, okay? That is a fantastic article. And it's, it really helps understand the struggles of the soldiers that, I mean, this ragtag band of farmers that won their own country for us. And then so with Reagan, our daughter, obviously her name is Reagan, and her middle name is Madison after James Madison. And I imagine that's self-explanatory. So that was the naming. And so we had our kids and then the company finally really took off. We had a military contract and it was in like 2011 or '12 is when that started. And it just grew, 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 grew because of the military. The Air Force was noticing how our defect rate was basically zero, statistically zero, when the prior vendor was 37% to 52%. So we were knocking this very difficult thing out of the park. And we were a good value. We were cheap in comparison. So that went on for years and we made a ton of money with it and it helped us. It got us out of debt, solidified our position. And we were able to get all the machinery we wanted. So basically, I have Disney World in my building. And it's just all the equipment that I could stand and software and it's just toys to me. And we can build pretty much anything. So that's kind of how the background on it, on, you know, we know how we live in Zephyr Hills. We lived there for over 12 years now. And we moved there to take care of my dad. I can't remember if I'm repeating myself on this one or not, but he had cancer for 11 years. And so I took care of him with my sister. And he passed at 13, I think it was. So, you know, it's just been trying to get used to life without him. And then obviously that, you know, you get over it and the business just grew like crazy until 18. And we just kind of took a couple of years off after that to try and prepare the new building and turn it into an aerospace facility. And now, you know, we just take work as it comes in over the transom. But it's, you know, we do, we just completed a Realtor class. So my wife decided she was thinking about it. I'm like, okay, I'll do it with you. And so we're gonna go become Realtors, but who knows what's gonna come with that.
True. So I know you touched a little bit in our last interview about how you homeschool your children and then tried to put them into public school again, correct? Is that the reason why?
Well, they never went to public school until this.
Oh, until this.
Yeah, they were homeschooled from moment one.
Is that why you decided to run for school war?
Well, yeah, the experience, so we, we were refugees from Common Core. Because I became very knowledgeable about it, studying Dr. Duke Pesto and Mary Black. They had, they did a tour and it just basically exposed Common Core for all of the stuff that wasn't obvious. I mean, the idea of having a federally standardized education that fits everyone across the country, that violates my senses. I'm a firm believer in 10th Amendment where you've got this, this part of the country is gonna have that culture and this part's gonna have that culture. And, you know, so you can go to all these different places in our country and get very different cultures. And then I'm also a firm believer in the constitutional guarantee of mobility. So where you can travel anywhere you want in the country and again, experience different things. Well, what leftists tried to do is create saneness everywhere. So the most effective way to do it is just spread misery evenly, right? So I like it, even though the people in California is, you know, from there, but they, I'm not, that's not my culture. I'm not interested in spending time with those people. But you know what? They can still be my fellow countrymen, they can still be my fellow American, you know, and I'll kill or die to defend their rights, you know? So that was one thing I was noticing and Common Core is about saneness. So that was the first thing that I disagreed with, but then there's all of the other thing, the testing and the measuring and how their, the whole purpose of Common Core was not to educate, it was to train, right? And now classical training, you know, it's not classical, it's classical training, okay? And classical training is a legitimate form of education amongst other things. But that's not what Bill Gates had in mind with Common Core. Bill Gates was training employees, okay? Workers, right? So, which is a Marxist term. And so I felt like categorizing kids into these various groups because of some predetermined outcome that you're testing at a nine or 10-year-old, you test in as being this type of person. So you're either gonna be a bricklayer or you're gonna be a doctor or you're gonna be an architect or you're gonna be a person who works at McDonald's, you know? If anybody did that testing on me, I'd be carrying a two-by-four at a construction site my whole life. I would never have pursued engineering, aircraft, any of this stuff, right? Patents, I've got a few patents, you know? So that is such a deeply flawed model and it robs people of their capabilities, their dignity. So it's just something I feel is evil, okay? And so I was not gonna allow my kids to be exposed to that. So you're gonna get a different start. And we had to weigh out. There's the social side of it where they're not gonna get social exposure and there's definitely a penalty for that. But at the same time, I had to decide, would I rather have someone who's not as socially adept, but who is brilliant, right? Because those connections in the brain, you're only gonna make them for so long, right? So the first three years is critical for connecting the nodes. The next seven years is still very important. You'll do a lot, but you do most of it in the first three years. So, and this is, I was just researching what the Japanese have done. And there's also other research too, but that's what I concluded. So this is the path I'm taking and then we need to stimulate the kids. Well, it worked. Reagan just tested in as nearly genius, you know. And then the only reason why she didn't test at genius level was because she was, she guessed the right answer immediately, then she second guessed herself. And the time that she took second guessing herself brought her out of genius territory into IQ of 130. So, and Wilson, I'm sure would test similarly. So as we, we realized that Common Core is a disaster for our kids, we pursued, you know, homeschooling and we had a hard time with it for a while. The local groups were very clique-ish and, you know, we just, Amy was struggling to bond with the other moms and the kids were generally not well behaved. So it was not working for us. Then finally we found FPA and it was just perfect from moment one. And the kids flourished, did really well. Well, anyway, we live somewhat rarely and we, there's no kids on our block. There's no, there's no kids really within like half a mile or more. And who knows how good kids they are, or how compatible they are with my, with our kids. So Wilson was kind of getting frustrated, right? He was really, he needed friends. And he's going into 8th grade, I think it was. So we just said, we gotta make a change now. And a friend of mine, we initially put him into the little Catholic school in San Antonio, which this is the last year under Sister Alice. Sister Alice did an amazing job. Then they hired this other person and she properly just ran that thing into the ground. And it lost all of its beauty, all of its character. It was unfortunate. It's very sad because it's an old school, it's got a really amazing tradition. So a friend of ours who had his son at that school said, hey, there's an engineering program over at Cypress Creek. Well, we're like, perfect, because Wilson's dying to be an engineer. That's all he wants in his entire life is engineering. And so, perfect. So we found a way to get him in, he started. And in the first hour he was there, he was, well, we had a problem. And the school, it was, it was, there was two boys that were behaving really inappropriately. And the school lied about the problem and then swept it under the rug. And I'm like, okay. And Wilson didn't tell us about it. He was like, well, he didn't know that. This is, he figured this is how things operate in public school, right? So moving on, then, you know, he's going through, he's learning and he's making some friends, but he's also being attacked, physically attacked. And the school does nothing about it. And Wilson doesn't provoke these people. He's truly Lily White in these cases, he didn't do a damn thing. And of course, the school, they're making excuses and they were, and then one of the kids would say, well, he taunted me in this way. And so obviously the school immediately believes him. And I gained an understanding based on this trend. Now I've got several occurrences that I'm dealing with here, that the school immediately has to blame everyone first. And then, oh, now it's all even, you know? And that, now I have to admit, there was suspensions that resulted from one or two of the attacks. So, you know, we'll let it go, right? But I'm, you know, this is like, wow, you know, why is there a lack of resolve here? Why, why isn't there like a swift interference, right? Why aren't we doing this right now? And what preceded all this? These kids are attacking this very sweet kid, Wilson. Well, what's the past? What got those kids here, you know? Well, anyway, then I've seen videos in class that Wilson's coming home with. They're, this Steve Cutts stuff, I mean, it's just horrible, you know? So I'm now, and I'm, my hobby has been studying Marxism and capitalism. And then I began studying cultural Marxism in the last few years. And I'm like, wait a minute, I've seen this before. So what I'm observing is teachers practicing cultural Marxism, whether they know it or not, it's happening.
Yes.
So, and then I'm also noticing that everything that's bizarre is celebrated. So if a kid comes in and says, I'm transgender, all of a sudden that, everyone's jumping up and down and talking about how proud they are of that kid for doing this or that, instead of having pity for them and compassion and trying to get this kid treatment.
Yes.
Right? So these are, these things really stood out to me that the school is doing the exact opposite of what they're supposed to be doing, as far as I'm concerned.
And where do you think this is coming from?
So it's all social justice, okay? And so social justice was started by Antonio Grauci at the Frankfurt School in the early 1920s. Grauci reviewed the Communist Manifesto from Marx and Engels and he decided this is inadequate. It's not adequate to pit the proletariat against the bourgeoisie. Because the proletariat admired the bourgeoisie in some cases, right? And we used to also, we used to idolize the people who had become successful and said, oh, let's mimic that and we'll be successful too, right? Hard work and honesty, you know? Well, anyway, Grauci said, no, 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 no. Here's what we need to do. We need to take people that look like this and put them in groups and strip each one of them of their identities and then cause them to assume the identity of the group. And now we've got them. And then we'll do it again with this group that looks this way and this group that looks that way. So now we've got all of these disparate groups that are manipulable. And the key is you can loosely tie them together to become kind of a mob. And we're gonna advance our cause, whether it's a political cause or violence, revolution, whatever. And then when it's all done, we'll separate them again, right? Because they can't ever unite. Then now, because now they're the majority, right? And the whole goal is to pit the minority against the majority. So, but what Grauci, the magic of what Grauci did was he created, he took envy from just economic envy and he turned it into racial envy. And he's saying, well, because of these people of European descent here, they're successful not because of Judeo-Christian practices, not because they're practicing primitive levels of capitalism. They're successful because they took it from you. You're the victim, right? It's kind of like Hitler where he's going to the people of Germany who have suffered under a generation of, yes, Germany made a huge mistake in World War I. It's obvious, right? Everybody knew that. But the French were so angry about being devastated, they, they, they would never allow Benjamin, Benjamin Strong was the treasurer, was the, he ran the US, Treasury, not treasury, Fed, he ran the Fed, right? He was the first Fed Secretary. So the whole goal was to try and build Europe back, but France wouldn't allow Germany to come back. They just kept them under the thumb, kept them under the thumb. Finally, Germany said, you know, screw it, we'll just start printing money and pay back our debts that way. You end up with the hyperinflation and the Weimar Republic is like the obvious, the greatest example of that, that in Zimbabwe. So they were able to create these manipulated groups, but Hitler was simply saying, look at all of the oppression you have, right? You don't have money. You don't have flowers in your flower pots, right? And that's, Germany's are very beautiful people. They, they, you go to Germany and there's, every window has a flower, a row of little flowers in front of it. Their yards are, they're small, but they're tidy. You know, everything's orderly, okay? That didn't happen. These people were starving and they were miserable. And they were, they, these are, this is the most industrious society on the planet and they've been rendered feckless. And so now you're screwing with their pride and they're like, I'll do anything, whatever it is, whatever it is. So Hitler comes and says to these very oppressed people, look at how awful your lives are. You have no money, you have no food, you know, you have all this misery and the Jew did this to you, right? So he can channel this anger, which has nothing to do with Jewish people. It's the result of the, of financial oppression from world banks, okay? And he can take it and direct it over here. And look how successful he was, right?
Yes.
With, he was, his own personal hatred of Jewish people, because he was Jewish too, right? But he was this deeply flawed soul, terrible soldier, right? And he was, he's got all these, these things, these failures that he could not take responsibility for. And that's why, that was his own, the source of his own, my belief, was his own personal source of anger towards Jewish people. That's what Grauci's, now, and Grauci was a predecessor to this, but this is the kind of thing that Grauci was tapping into. And I kind of think he was one of the early ones to do this. I mean, he was the first to do it from a racial point of view. So anyway, he developed all of the social justice theory, which did result, by the way, in the anti-fascistic movement in Nazi Germany, which was the predecessor to Antifa here, okay? So Hitler, Hitler was, it was, Grauci took that and exported it. And Herbert Marcuse, Marcuse brought it over, right? And the greatest book on this is Andrew Breitbart's Righteous Indignation. Fantastic. He covers this so well. The history's fantastic. So Marcuse brings it, he goes to Columbia University and he starts spreading it through the university system there. He ends up going to the West Coast, does it there. And then he catches the eye of Saul Alinsky. And Saul Alinsky makes it cool to be a revolutionary, to be a Marxist. And then Howard Zinn comes along and puts it into the universities. So the universities are now cultivating this amongst the young people. The prob, that was, we could deal with that as a society, right? There was a German philosopher that said, if you don't nurture the roots that brought you your society, how can you maintain your society if you don't nurture the roots that brought it to you? Well, you know, Zinn decided, well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get them in the colleges, right? They're not stupid, right? So the problem is that if those people, sometimes they grow out of it, right? Winston Churchill said, if you're not a liberal when you're 20, you have no heart. If you're not a conservative when you're 30, you have no mind. So people do tend to grow out of this sometimes, right? But then they thought, no, we gotta get them as children. And that's what scares me. Because now it's intergenerational. You get them as kids, you're gonna get that generation's kids. So that's kind of, that's what I'm observing. And what got my, why I'm going, I'm seeing this throughout schools. I mean, you're asking me, your question was, where did this start? And that's where, I think that's the history of all of this, right? But I'm, you know, you go into the school and when I was substitute teaching, there was, there were children and they were obvious girls. And I'm, but when I'm doing, I'm doing the grading and I'm noticing it says that it's a male. And I'm like, wait, hold on a second, I mean, and so I'm like, I'm trying to process this. I ultimately asked a principal, is this so-and-so a boy or a girl? Well, if they identify as a, as whatever gender, that's what we marked them down as.
Yeah, so yeah, that's my issue. And I'm glad you brought the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, who created Common Core. And I found, I tend to find that they fund all these programs that we're using in our schools right now, such as the New Teacher Project, TNTP. And also with the whole...
Now, TNTP is, that's where the spreadsheet came from, right? That, where it shows the impressions of all these administrators that have been to the training. Where's that Schusterman?
It's connected.
Okay.
They're connected. And I also wanted to mention the social emotional learning. You were talking about putting children into groups and separating them. I saw the benchmarks myself with the whole social emotional, it's not curriculum, they're benchmarks that they're allowed to use throughout their teaching.
What did you think of those?
They shocked me. Because one of the benchmarks stated to ask the children to identify themselves, whether it be their gender, their race, their ethnicity, et cetera. How is, social emotional learning is supposed to teach children to be kind? That's what the board says.
Our board?
Yes. What does that have anything to do with, what does identifying your race, your gender or ethnicity have anything to do with being kind?
Well, what the hell does the school have to do with kindness? What about mom and dad?
Exactly.
So what I see in social emotional learning, I watched, I mean, you know, doing their research, right? This woman, Trish something, she did some TEDx talk and she's, she's just this, she's just professional gobbledygook. What I notice, my understanding of social emotional learning is, I think it's an oversimplification to say it's to teach kids to be kind, okay? The school, that is not the domain of, in fact, that is the exclusive domain of the parents. Teaching about sex, okay? Teaching about whatever behaviors, right? The only thing the school needs to participate in is deterring behavior. I mean, and I think also there is reinforcing of good behavior too. Fine, we can reward that, okay? But we're not gonna define, this is, okay? So if you're gonna say define what kindness is, first of all, that's a very relative term.
Yes.
Okay? And if you have a parents that come from Eastern European descent or Canadian descent or Argentinian descent, you're gonna get all kinds of definitions of kindness, okay? But if you get the people who left those places and came here, the melting pot, right? The melting pot, right? Um, then you're gonna get, I think, an even different definition of kindness. And I think you're gonna find that that, you know, we're pretty kind people. I mean, we were until this social justice nonsense drove a wedge between our shoulder blades. So. The purpose, I think the reason that the SEL exists in schools is to further replace the parents. Just like, I think I've told you about the where, I was talking to a principal and. And I'm saying, why do we have all these counselors in these schools? Cause these people are not qualified mental health professionals. And when I, when the kid, when I was teaching and the kid said, I gotta go see the counselor, you can't not send them, you gotta send them. But I would always say, are you okay? Do you need, are you hurt? No, no, I just, I I just need, I need to talk. I'm like, okay, so you go talk. But they come back and there's more drama. Right, when they come back. So whatever they, that happened if they're, which generally they're just rejected because there's ten kids sitting in line. Didn't help, it made it worse. So I'm asking, why are we doing this? Why are we providing all this counseling? And they said, well, cause some of the kids uh need help, need need, I said, they need to talk about things. I said, well, what about mom and dad? Well, sometimes the kids aren't comfortable talking to their parents. And I'm just like, so you're the parent now? Who who the hell are you? How dare you? So. This is all part of that. This whole, they're, they, the. If if parents give away, it's like free lunches. You tell me parents aren't willing to nourish their children? Come on. They love their kids, you know, and sometimes, you know. Anybody can screw up as a parent, you know, and you feel guilty about it, right? And that, that's the motivation to do better next time and and to make up for it and whatnot. You're not gonna just let your kid go hungry, okay, you know? And, you know, yeah, there's a bunch of lazy schlubs out there that are perfectly willing to let the the state feed their kid. But when the state provides food, the parents are now further removed from helping their children. Right? Common Core, looking at the math problems and the kid. That Common Core math is nothing like the math that we grew up with. Right? So we, the kid starts doing division, he's drawing the boxes, and he's drawing the Doritos in the boxes. And you're like, I don't know what that is. And Johnny's asking for help and you're like, I don't know how to help. You're gonna have to go back to your teacher. You're gonna have to go back to the government for help, right? And it goes, this is originates nineteen ten, uh Woodrow Wilson. The purpose of a liberal arts education is to separate the boy from the father. I mean, this is the evolution. Of what Wilson was doing. Right? Which noted racist and hated the Constitution, right? Right? So, I mean, this guy, he was in the KKK. The first movie, did you, I don't know if I've told you this stat, but do you know what the first movie you ever played in the White House was?
I I don't know.
Birth of a Nation. Familiar with Birth of a Nation? It's a very sympathetic tale of the Ku Klux Klan. Yeah, so, um, and I could go, I give you the history of the KKK, but. The 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 net of it is, is that these people are, that are populating. The administrative staff of Pasco County School System are perfectly willing to assume parental role. That that, and if you, if you surrender it, they will lap it up. And I, now, the other half of this, I think they, they think they're doing good.
I know, I I believe that too. I believe that they think that they're making a a good, they're benefiting the children.
Making a difference, right? I wanna make a difference, right? Which is, you know. You're wrong, though. That's the problem. You you, what you're doing is harmful. And here's the results. And I think the 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 way they're training once though in in college. You, the training is you gotta do more of it. Right? We have to match the gas pedal harder. Instead of being introspective and saying, oh, wait a minute. Maybe this is not really um correct. Maybe this is not beneficial to the to the kids. Or the parents, right? So, um, and and again. It's kinda like when you go to the school and you see those giant ten-foot tall fences. And, you know, one entry portal, which again, I understand that we're dealing with the Marjorie Stone and Douglas thing and. And and it's, you know, there is this balancing act of security and whatnot, but at the same time. Who's the, who is being pushed out? Parents, right? And when, when you go and when a parent wants to be with a teacher, it's this massive process. Uh, you know, when my parents wanted to see the teacher, they just called. You know? And that was the end of it, you know? And now there has to be an administrator involved and maybe that's a, a, a new union negotiated thing, I don't know, you know. I I can't wait to get on this board and and just talk to teachers. Can we just have, let's just talk, let's, what is important, what are your concerns? And my expectation is their concerns are they're being abused by the kids and the parents and they're not supported by administration and they're not paid competitively. If we can sum those three up, that's, that's the teacher's concerns as far as I can see.
So that was my, my impression was to, when you were a school board member, that you would go out and speak to the teachers and to the parents. It it seems to me that a majority of the people on the board only do the minimal effort. That's what I see.
What I, Matt Geiger and I have been on this, we went on this fun tour of diners. Where we would interrupt people at their breakfast and and they would let us. And they would talk to us. And it was, it was, I was shocked at how many teachers we came across. And every one of them was really interested. First of all, ha- the ones that were not retired were very tight-lipped at first. They were scared. They're scared to talk about CRT, they're scared to talk about any of this woke stuff. They're uh, they're, they're a very uneasy about the whole compensation thing. And it it doesn't even occur to them that they can ask for more authority. To get their authority back. And so when I posit to them, um, you should be able to issue lunch detentions and after-school detentions. That are, that the administration supports you on, right? And if you issue a referral, some punishment is coming. Right? And it's very important to understand or remember, discipline is a state of mind. Punishment is consequence. Okay, so the deterrent is the punishment, right? So we're trying to create this with this. So, um, if you can, if a teacher issues a referral, there is punishment. You know, I, there, my thought is, I mean, the Japanese have got a great idea. The kids, they don't have janitors in their schools. The kids clean the schools.
I've come to, cause I love Japanese culture and I always thought that was such a great idea for the kids to have uh cleaning duties. Um, that teaches them discipline, teaches them, you know, how to clean. You know, we might not be cleaning at home, so cleaning at, you know, the vicinity that they they learning. Would give them that sort of connection, like, oh, this is my second home, almost like, this is where, I have to take care of this area.
Ownership.
And ownership, yes. So I love that idea.
It's, it it, it teaches them a little bit of selflessness, that they're actually cleaning up after others, plus it teaches them, oh, someone's gonna clean it after me. You know, I don't wanna be that person. Well, my idea is if there's a spectrum, you know, there's the word spectrum. Scraping gum off the floor, picking up trash in the parking lot. You know, more detentions. In-school suspension, maybe half day, maybe full day, out-of-school suspensions. I was talking to a teacher uh last night. And and he was explaining, they have this really cool program in Hern- Hernando County, or I'm sorry, Hillsborough County that at a, at a school, and the guy got a grant for it. Ah, I forgot the name of it, but it was, you've got the kids that are basically phoning it in, right? They're just not there, they're not serious about their education, at least they don't think that the school is the source of their education. So. These kids spend a half a day doing their core classes and the other half of the day in ISS. And what they end up doing is their homework, because ISS, you ain't, you're not talking, you're not on your phone. You're, it's you, your desk, your pencil and your papers. And they end up doing their work. Not spectacularly, okay? Someone ended up drawing pictures of whatever. You know, the the, if if, and if they violate the rules, they get another day. Right? Or if they don't, if they're, like, for example, if you miss detention, then you get two more detentions. Right? There, it it, it's a, the ser- and what they're trying to convey to the kids is, we are serious about your behavior. It's time for you to be serious about your behavior. And it was a fantastic success. I can't remember what he said, the 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 grade, I think they had experienced a letter grade improvement, is what he said. Every school that this administrator influ- implemented the system in, he got a letter grade improvement. That's saying something, right? Now, um, he also, the interesting thing, he he, he uh trademarked this, this system. So all we have to do is buy it. I don't know how much it charges for it, but it can't be that much. You know what I mean? Or we come up with our own version of, right? Nonetheless, um, I think that we could, we could, with the whole punishment thing and it is. I think that we're losing our veteran teachers. Because they're being treated poorly. I I, I don't, money is not, I don't, I don't think that's the number one thing for these teachers. So, although that's another problem that's, to me, is self-evident. Right? We have to, Kurt Brownie gets up and gives this ridiculous discussion, uh, video on this. Lift up Pasco. I mean, first of all, it's just full of disinformation. And the way he presents these these things, it, they mean something else, it's just really dis- disingenuous. I'm very disappointed that he did that. And it's easy to pick it apart and I I, I've got a video, I'm gonna do a video on it and 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 do that, okay? I promised that last time probably, it's been crazy busy with this Realtor thing. But the first, you know, you've got, he's, they're gonna, they're gonna pull, they're gonna increase salaries by thirty seven hundred bucks a year. We're not even competitive with Pinellas County. Pinellas County has world-class beaches, fully-developed infrastructure, any store you want within two miles. Okay, and great restaurants. Pasco is not exactly a culinary destination. Uh, but I'd like it to be, you know? Any restaurateurs out there, let's get it in here, guys. So how are, how are we gonna compete by, even if we're paying identical panels? How do we compete with a teacher who's trying to relocate from Ohio or wherever, right? They're gonna pick Pinellas, even though it's a little more expensive to live there. It's a far more glamorous cause of pull and livestock. Now, if you want rural. Then you'll, you can come to Pasco for a little while. And get that, um, I mean, you know, our property that that's been, it's been getting less and less rural as the years go by, right? And, you know, which is cool, cause it keeps on shooting up in value, but same time, the 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 character of the area is changing something. But they're taking away our low tax, right? Cause that, we were all, everybody lived in Pasco and worked in Tampa, worked in Hillsborough, right? That was the whole thing, or Pinellas, because it was cheap living, you could buy property cheap and we had low taxes. Well, they're really taking a sledgehammer to both of those things. You know, so what made us unique um is going away. Now, we're be, what's happening is, we are becoming like Pinellas and Hillsborough to a certain extent. The problem is, we really aren't gonna be able to do that. We are, we don't have beaches. We don't like, not like clear water, right? There's water out there and, you know, fine, but it's not gonna be enough to attract someone. As far as I'm concerned. There are tens of thousands of teachers across this country, they are, they're refugees. They're they're tired of the lockdowns, they're tired of being forced to wear masks, they're tired of all the CRT LGBT cram down. And they can't speak their minds. You control speech, you're controlling thought. Okay, that's depression. And these people deserve, they're they're craving someplace. And I, I mean, and I told the deputy superintendent, I said, this is two years ago, I said, we have a golden opportunity here. To be the recipient of all these people who think, like, you know, right-thinking Americans. I'm not even talking about hardcore conservatives, I'm just talking about patriots. You know, people that love their country. Um, let's, 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 let's just wave the flag for a little bit here and we're gonna be overwhelmed with these people. Nobody took that advice.
So, um, once you get on the board, I know you spoke on, you know, trying to stay away from communism, socialism. With all these programs like Cr- Critical Race Theory and Social Emotional Learning, which is the same thing, Social Emotional Learning is just. A critical race theory in disguise. What are something you can do once you're on the board to deter from those kind of programs? And what is your ultimate goal when, once you're on the board?
Lancaster County, Pennsylvania banned all of this. Now, I, I wanna try and find the language that they used. That was months and months ago and it hasn't been, there's been no court challenge. Okay, so if you're a teacher and you're participating. In trying to modify the the gender perception of a child, you're gonna get fired. Okay, if you're a teacher or any staff member frankly, that's participating in. Um, promoting this this anti-Western stuff, you're gonna get fired. Well, how is it Lancaster County can figure that out? One, and then Pennsylvania is a dichotomy, right? Cause you you you, you get Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, hyper-liberal places. You get into the hinterlands, it's not, right? They're just, and and it's not, it's not hyper cr- um, conservative. It's just common sense. Right? So. They found a way to do it. I mean, I'm sure I can come up with some, some, some. Language. Right? And if we can get a a a county attorney that's worth their salt. I think with Alfonso, is this guy's name, not a fan of him. Um, so we can get an attorney that actually wants to promote what the board, the elected board members, the will of the people, right? So if we get a a county attorney that that isn't scared of their own shadow and, you know, we might get sued for that, let's get sued. It doesn't cost that much, especially when we're dealing with a billion and a half dollar budget.
And also, if we're just following the Constitution. That there should be nothing to fear if you're following the law.
Yeah, and also, schools do have special dispensation. There was a Supreme Court case from a school, a suit in Northern California. Uh, where the the kids were wearing shirts that were offensive and the school said, you gotta stop wearing that. Now, obviously I'm a proponent of the First Amendment. At the same time. This is, it's public property, but the schools are in charge. The administration does need to make it, make some decisions, okay? So, um, there is case history that that supports the schools. Having a say in s- written speech, okay? You know, I mean, and there was a fascinating thing that I discovered and I've got a video already, I've already done on dress code. Uh, where they actually have a carve-out for the Second Amendment on shirts. Uh, that if a kid wears a a shirt about Second Amendment, they can't be told to take it off or turn it inside out. That's interesting to me. If they could just get the girls to cover themselves and enforce those rules. And maybe let's not have a quarter of the kids wearing Crocs and flip flops to school, right? But anyway, there's case history on the schools having some say in this and controlling some of this stuff. And I do think it's a fine line, but the 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 biggest problem I've got is turning kids into activists. Okay, so political, this whole political thing, having walk, teachers walking out when the parental rights bill was passed. That happened at Cypress Creek. Okay, nothing happened, nobody said anything. Um, why? You know, so if you've got a teacher that walks out of the classroom, that's dereliction of duty. As far as I'm concerned, they should be fired or at least reprimanded. Okay, there's gotta be some path to dismissal. Or build the case that this is a teacher that's got some kind of agenda. You know, you can't, these teachers are human beings, so you can't just, you can, they can't, I don't want them to come in there and be some automaton. But we need to hire better. Okay, we are hiring teachers right now that torment children and their coworkers with this left-wing nonsense, okay? Put a sock in it. Take it off campus. You wanna jump up and down off campus, fine. Okay, you're gonna go a mile away from campus though, you're not gonna stand at the at the gates, okay? But fine, I don't have a problem with it. That's your right. I'll kill or die to defend your right for that. But if you're at a school where there's impressionable children, you're not gonna create these impressions. Cause these impressions are about taking down America. Okay, we have a shared history. And by the way, I've heard this insane idea of. And by the way, I've heard this insane idea of what is your truth? There's one truth, there's the truth.
Yes.
Okay? That's the end of it.
Yeah.
Okay? You may have some history, there may be something that is a, a trigger for you. Well, trigger to me is just an explanation, excuse for bad behavior. Okay? Control yourself. What's, what is important to me is to try and restore the simplicity and predictability for students, parents and teachers. And the only source of that can be administration, okay, and the district. That's where I'm looking to, to create some changes. And I'm talking about, I, again, the thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle, let's turn that into a hundred-piece jigsaw puzzle. That everyone can understand, okay?
Yes.
Reagan was putting together jigsaw puzzles when she was five. She could do a hundred-piece jigsaw puzzle when she was five. Everyone can do that, right? This is something that parents can interpret and participate in. This is something that, that the kids can at least understand the decisions that are being made for them. And again, stop turning kids into activists so that the kids are out there advocating for some decision, right? Um, and then let's make it so that the, the teachers have, they can predictably count on support from administration.
Yes.
Okay? And from the district.
Yes.
So that if you issue, again, if you issue a punishment, it's gonna get followed through on. Okay? Cause I mean, when I was a kid, oh my gosh, I mean, and I had my share of all these things, punishments. Thank God I was never actually suspended for school, but I had, you know, detentions and, and it was, it was because I was joking around too much. I was, I was, it wasn't for fighting or anything crazy like that. Uh, but I spent my time in ISS and, and detentions and, and whatnot. And Amy, straight A student, she got caught one time she ever, the only time she ever went to McDonald's to get something, or Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, she got busted coming back. And here, phi theta kappa, straight A's picking up trash in the park.
Oh.
And I could come and go at will and never got caught. But anyway, you know, anyway, next question.
So, um, I'm getting short on time, so I'm just gonna ask you,